...nineteen ninety-three Brady Handgun Violence Prevention Act, which made it so that there was five waiting period, five day waiting period for purchasing guns and a hand required background check for anyone buying a firearm from a federally licensed firearm dealer.
In two thousand thirteen, a bill that would require extensive background checks before buying firearms was proposed. Over ninety percent of Americans supported this bill, but the bill did not pass due to the senate being six votes short of a major, super majority. Due to the NRA's threats to refuse campaign funds, certain congressmen, mainly in the Republican Party, voted against the bill. With such a fear for the loss of campaign funds, the NRA has powerful influence over most gun control bills that are trying to be passed.
Ninety percent of Democrats agree with the Americans who support background checks, and a Republican majority would guarantee that no background check bill passes in the foreseeable future. For Republicans, the ability to own unlimited number of guns and carry them whenever and wherever one wants, with a minimum of government oversight, constitutes an essential part of freedom while allowing the owner protect, to protect him herself, herself from physical harm.
For Democrats, widespread gun, gun ownership significantly contributes to physical violence inside and outside the gun owner's household. Thus, in this case, unrestrained liberty must give way to regulation. In a recent gathering, Congressman Jim McGovern questioned the need for citizens to own weapons of war and adamantly in fa, was adamantly in favor of gun control and background checks.
The Second Amendment could be interpreted differently depending on the case. It is sometimes argued in favor of a militia or in favor of the individual. In the Supreme Court case of District versus, District of Columbia versus Heller, the court determined that when Congress passed the bill of the term militia, referred generally and broadly to the segment of population able to be conscripted into militia by the state. It is not referred to any organization or military force.
Based upon that finding, the Supreme Court ruled that it is an individual's right to keep and bear arms, because it has facilitated military service by ensuring that citizens would have the necessary arms when called to military duty, officially stating that the Second Amendment refers to the individual's right to possess firearms for traditional lawful uses such as self-defense in the home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have another presentation?
Yes, we have another short one.
Just for the formality of it, I'll entertain a motion to allow them to go over the three minutes for these citizens coming up.
Motion to waive the three minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Thank you.
So, thank you, Scott and Sarah. That was, there are only two members of their six-person group, so they actually had to read everyone else's parts tonight. So, they did a great job of parts that they weren't necessarily reading at the state competition. So, our final unit tonight is Unit One, again, dealing with Phil Sockle, Foundations of the Constitution. And we see that they were awarded the best unit award for Auburn High School as well. So, if Unit One wants to come on up, that'd be great.
And if it's easier for two of them to sit in these chairs to use these microphones, and they're welcome to do that, and then three can swap behind there.
So, question one for Unit One reads, "The Declaration of Independence has been described as the most revolutionary political statement in American history. What new ideas about government and its purposes are set forth in the Declaration, and why might they be considered revolutionary?" The first sub-bullet, "What principles expressed in the Declaration are traceable to John Locke and other natural rights philosophers?" And the second sub-bullet, "Why do you think the Declaration is one of the most imitated and copied documents in the world today?"
When Thomas Jefferson proclaimed-
That to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed.
He had no idea what impact it would have on future nations. Viewed as one of the most influential documents in American history, the Declaration of Independence broke off the thirteen colonies from the British Empire and formed the United States of America. This document aired all grievances that the colonists, who later became the founding fathers, had to King George III.
When he refused to comply to these changes that they wanted to be made, they decided to break off from the empire and form their new nation. This nation was to be Republican and respond to the needs and desires of the citizens. This was a radical act at the time, where no nation since Greece had employed a democracy.
The founding fathers set their ideals forward into this document. These ideals were very different from those of most other nations of the time. However, the framers did not come up with their own new ideals about government.
Instead, they popularized the ideals of others, such as the ancient Athenians and the natural rights philosophers. What was so revolutionary about the Declaration of Independence was it was the first time that these concepts were to be implemented into a modern government.
No government in recent history had thought that the rights of the people were of the utmost importance, or even that the people should be given the right to choose their leaders and thus shape the future of their own nation. In most other countries, the norm was a powerful government, often a monarchy, with the king or queen being considered chosen by God, a politically strong upper class, and weak and unheard lower and middle classes. Declaration changed this by creating a nation in which the voices of all the people would be heard equally.
When the founding fathers drafted the Declaration of Independence, they sought inspiration from many different philosophers. One of the philosophers who is especially influential in the framers' way of thinking was John Locke. Evidence of his and other natural rights philosophers' way of thinking can be seen throughout the document.
One sentence states-
All men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness.
This is just one example where we see these philosophies, such as the belief that all humans retain basic rights, no matter the circumstances, shined through in the Declaration of Independence. Locke explicitly describes a social contract in which the government must protect the rights of the people, and in turn, the people must obey the law.
If the government fails to uphold its end of the social contract, then the people have the right to change their government as they see fit in order to form a fair and just government. Jefferson, the key author of the Declaration of Independence, even uses the same language as Locke, describing a reason to alter the government as a long train of abuses.
The Declaration was at the time, a radical document, contained many ideals not seen since the days of Athenian democracy. It was, in fact, the first modern document to base itself on the ideals of Republicanism and democracy.
It was a document that shed the usage of a monarchy, and instead embraced ideals set down by natural rights philosophers. This document also states, sorry, this document contains strong and clear language regarding equality to all men. This document also states, in no uncertain terms, the government must serve the people and not the inverse.
Such a political system is undoubtedly appealing to any people who live under an authoritarian government that denies the people of their natural rights. Declaration of Independence is also a model document for any nation under the rule of another imperialistic nation.
With its condemnation of King George III's impositions, readers of this document could use it to support their own claims to liberty and protection from a powerful and overreaching government. This document also was the first of its kind. A Declaration of Independence went on to become a common format for a country declaring self-sovereignty. In Vietnam, Ho Chi Minh seeked independence from France and used the Declaration of Independence as a source of inspiration when writing his Proclamation of Independence.
While the United States' Declaration of Independence is heavily based on the concept of democracy, other nations that have found inspiration in it are not necessarily seeking a similar government, but instead simply looking for a model that can demonstrate how a nation should break off from an imperialistic power. Thank you.
Can you guys, can you guys all just introduce yourselves, please?
Hi, I'm Matthew Amia. I'm a senior at Auburn High School.
I'm Michael Travers, and I'm also a senior at Auburn High School.
I'm Ben Zakarin, and I'm also a senior at Auburn High School.
I'm Nicholas John, and I'm also a senior at Auburn High School.
I'm Matthew Blaze, I'm as well a senior at Auburn High School.
And I'm Matthew Rodwell, and I am also a senior at Auburn High School.
Excellent. Congratulations. Great job.
So, we really appreciate the town listening to us, and again, just to emphasize this being a product of all the hard work of the teachers at Auburn Public Schools, and you know, what they've been able to create. Although we get them as seniors, you know, they are continually building skills that they've been learning since their primary levels. So, thank you all for that. Do you have any questions for us?
Well, I had heard on the piece, and I'm not sure who can address this, um, that it's quite costly to go, and there's an ongoing fundraising effort. The town can't raise money, but I understand there's an effort through the school-
Absolutely.
-if you want to share that, so people at home can-
Yeah, we've been reaching out to the community. Our students have been handing out letters that they themselves drafted to ask for any, any donations that could be given. It is, in fact, quite substantial. But, and anybody is more than welcome to help, and if they have any questions, they can contact either Spencer or myself at the high school, through email, through the phone, whatever means necessary, and we would gladly talk to them about it.
Okay, and do, can you just give us a number of the Auburn High School, please?
Oh, it's a-
If people are watching, they'll, they'll write it down now rather than look it up.
Yeah, it's five zero eight, eight three two, seven seven one one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, guys. Really, really impressive.
Thank you.
So, moving on, the next item we have is an above stor, above ground storage license at two seventy-three Washington Street for Inland Harbors Realty LLC. Oh, yeah, you guys can go if you'd like. We'll just wait a second for the room to clear before we open the hearing.
Great job, guys. Great job.
So, we have a, a seven oh five hearing for Inland Harbors Realty LLC, two seven three Washington Street. Is there a motion to open the hearing?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. So, in your packet, you have the information regarding this, um, this application. As you may notice, it was in your packet previously, but there was an issue with notification of a butters, and we confirmed that all butters were notified. Okay, great, thank you. If you could give your name for the record?
My name is Scott Des Rosches for Inland Harbors Realty.
Okay. And can you just tell us a little bit about what you're doing?
Uh, we currently have two thousand gallons of storage, and we'd like to increase it to three thousand gallons of storage.
In your packet, you have a statement from the fire chief that he has no, no issues, that the project has been reviewed, and they support the issuance of the license. Do any members have comments? Mister-
To the chair.
Olstrom.
What's the nature of the business, and why the increase from two thousand to three thousand gallons?
Uh, the nature, it's regardless of the nature of the business, it's for heating the property. And the increases, we have a building permit to add another seven thousand eight hundred square feet, and in cold temperatures, it would need that volume to, uh, to operate in a vapor.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Mister Simone?
Um, this doesn't, this doesn't require anything from the DCG?
No. No, this one.
So, there are no other conditions, anything that's-
No, this goes through the fire chief.
All right. Good enough.
Is there any other, is there any public comment or question? Seeing none, do you have anything else?
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Is there a motion regarding the application?
Make a motion, we approve the license, provide the all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of the departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it, and failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
We have no communications under Board of Selectmen items. We have a drain layers license for RE Barrows Construction. Included are the applications and recommendation from the sewer department. As you may recall, it's the board's policy not to require the applicant to be present, that this goes through the sewer department. They have handled checking on the insurance and bond and the hundred dollar application fee. So, there are no issues. The sewer superintendent, um, from Jeff Mitchell, attached is the drain layers license application for RE Barrows Construction of Worcester, Mass., along with a check in the amount of one hundred dollars for the application fee. The company has been licensed with the town of Auburn for many years, and therefore, we recommend the issuance of a drain layers license by the Board of Selectmen. Are there any questions or comments?
I make a motion, we approve the license, provide the all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions upon it. Failure to comply with any and all the conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Second. Any discussion? Mister Simone?
Just one question. I, I've noticed that most of the, most of the drain layer licenses, um, and I, I don't know if anyone wants to answer for Mister Mitchell, but, um, most of them say that these people were licensed, have been licensed in Auburn for many years. So, are these licenses that lapsed, or are they just, are they only good for a certain amount of time? I can't remember on the drain layer license-
Well, the, the drain layers license, they do come up for renewal, but, but there are so many of them, they don't renew them automatically because they don't know if they're going to have work in town. They could go a couple of years without work-
That's fine.
-in town, so. So, this is one of the ones that we, we don't consider a renewal.
Good enough, thanks.
Anything further? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Next item we have is gift acceptance. There is none. We have a request for an Eagle Scout proclamation, and we have a very nice letter in our packets that I'd like to read into the record. Dear Auburn Selectmen, I am writing this letter on behalf of Nick John, age eighteen, which will be presented his Eagle rank in the Boy Scouts of America on June fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Nick is a junior assistant scout master of Boy Scout Troop Fifty-Three, Faith Baptist Church, Auburn, Massachusetts. I am sure that you know that the rank of Eagle Scout is the highest rank in Boy Scouts. Since the beginning of scouting in the United States, approximately five percent of the one, one hundred and fourteen million scouts are fortunate enough to achieve this rank. There are many stringent requirements to earning this rank, one being living by the rules, rules of the Scout Oath. On my honor, I will do my best to do my duty to God and my country, to obey the Scout Law, to help other people at all times, to keep myself physically strong, mentally awake, and morally straight. Nick has lived by these rules and has shown leadership as well as a desire to help his troop and community. One of the many requirements to becoming Eagle Scout is to perform a needed service to this community, church or school. As his Eagle Scout project, Nick set up collection boxes in the schools in the town of Auburn to collect lightly-used shoes and new socks. All items collected were for schoolchildren in the village of Ghana. The community which was, the community was very supportive, and Nick filled eight large boxes of shoes and socks. He then packed the boxes and arranged them to be shipped to the village of Tamak Toku in August two thousand and thirteen. We are very proud of Nick earning his rank of Eagle. However, along with the honor of receiving his, this rank on June fourteenth, I would very much be able to have some form, form of message from you to complete the ceremony. I sincerely hope that this request is too mu, not too much of an imposition, but I feel scouting is one way we can help keep our country and community strong. Sincerely, Brian Dzalinski, Assistant Scout Master. So, I entertain a motion to approve a proclamation for, um, Mister John.
Motion to approve proclamation for Nick John.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Go ahead.
Isn't he the kid that was just here? Wasn't, didn't he say his name was Nick John? What?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Um, I've had a request to move uptown manager items because we have people in the audience who, um, who are waiting on these items. I'll entertain a motion to move up town manager items, number seven.
Motion to move uptown, all of them?
Yeah, 'cause we have split-
Town manager items seven A through seven E, motion to move them up in the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Ms. Jacobson, the first item, Packardog Golf Course Analysis.
Great, thank you. Uh, I'm just gonna give you a brief, kind of setup into the presentation that Bill Coyle has, and with him tonight, Bill Coyle, our DPW Director, and Joanna Packer, the Assistant Town Engineer, have done a lot of work on this project over the last few months. Uh, but just by way of background, just to remind the board that this was one of the goals that they had given me for the last year. Uh, I believe the goals were established last April. So, this goal, we've been working on it since then, um, to look at the different options that are available to the town with regard to the golf course. The current status, which Bill will go into, but just briefly, the, it is leased out right now to an operator who does every, a hundred percent of everything, and that contract expires December fifteenth, December two thousand and fifteen, which is why the board gave me this goal, to start now, taking a look at what we could do when that does expire. Uh, in addition to the local golf course analysis that Bill Coyle is gonna review, uh, and he has spent months looking into this, we also looked at some industry analysis and some trend analysis, both nationally and globally. And a summary of that is in the package that we sent you tonight, as well as a summary of a entire report from Bill Coyle. So, you have two parts to this. We have an overall cover that looks at total industry analysis, it looks at, um, the various options that are available to municipal golf courses for their operations, talks a little bit about the pros and cons of each of those, uh, the potential mechanisms for doing that. And then it gets into the specifics, which was the analysis that Bill Coyle and his team had done on the different golf courses, and then a preliminary recommendation. And I say preliminary because as you see in this report, we still recommend doing some further financial analysis, but I know we've, we've made a preliminary recommendation that I'll let Bill explain, and then we will be doing some further work on this. We do have a couple of years, we want to get started now, but we want to make sure that the financial aspect of this works out. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Bill.
Good evening. Bill Coyle, DPW Director, Town Engineer. And over the past year, I've worked closely with the town manager to look at options for how we could operate and manage the Packardog Golf Course. As the town manager had mentioned, within two years, just under two years, the current contract will expire, and we need to make a decision on how we're gonna move forward with the maintenance and management of the golf course. Uh, the PowerPoint presentation that I'll present to you this evening is basically a summary of the report that you have before you, and I will go through it relatively quickly and be happy to answer any questions when, when I'm completed. A little bit of background, as many of you are aware, Professor Robert Gardiner's launch of the first successful liquid-fueled rocket occurred on March sixteenth, nineteen twenty-six, on the, on the golf course property, uh, which at the time was the farm owned by the Ward family. In nineteen thirty-nine, the farm, which I believe was a strawberry farm, was actually converted to a golf course at that time. And later in the years, it was then a corporation, a corporation was formed, the Packardog Golf Corporation, and in nineteen eighty-one, the town of Auburn purchased the golf course, which consisted of fifty-four acres. This purchase was facilitated by a grant that the town did receive from the federal government for, I believe, half the cost of that purchase. Our objective was to determine the most cost-effective plan for the management and operation of the Packardog Golf Course while maintaining a first, maintaining a first-class facility at a reasonable fee structure. The evaluation process, uh, when we sat down with, with the town manager and with the assistant town manager, we decided that we would look at other public facilities in the general area, and we found three of them, which I'll go into more detail, that are all publicly owned and run, they're running different variations. Some of them completely privatized, some a hybrid of partly private, partly public. And we looked at all different operations, the cost of each one of these operations, how the fees were structured, and the condition of each of the facilities. The first course that we looked at was the Green Hill Golf Course in Worcester. Myself, the assistant town manager, and Ms. Jacobson met with the management team of the city of Worcester, responsible for the oversight of the golf course. And this was back in this past summer. So, we, we've been evaluating this, uh, these alternatives for quite some time now. And Green Hill Golf Course, different from Packardog being a nine-hole, Green Hill is eighteen-hole municipal golf course. It's operated and managed by the city. However, the tees, greens, and fairways are privately maintained. So, again, Packardog is completely privatized, and Worcester is, again, a hybrid, partly public, partly private. The staffing for the city of Worcester is essentially two full-time employees, uh, one being the, I believe, the golf pro and the manager of the facility, then also a full-time employee, um, at the, the pro shop. And they have fourteen part-time employees as well, uh, working at the golf course. Golf carts, you'll probably hear me mention a number of times. One of the things I found very common with these meetings with all three golf, uh, golf courses, is that the golf carts are a significant revenue generator. And one of the things I think that we would need to look at, um, in the future on what we proceed with Packardog, on trying to increase the usage of the golf carts. Uh, I think each, each golf course that we met with and each management team couldn't emphasize enough the importance of utilizing golf, golf carts as a revenue generator. And they also, as I'll mention later, also tournaments being very important as well in generating revenues. The restaurant, the city of Worcester, uh, houses, seats rather, eighty people, and that is privately run. And again, that's something you'll, you'll see as a common theme with all three of these golf courses, the restaurants are privately, privately managed. The other golf course that we visited, myself and Kenny Fairbanks, the highway superintendent, formerly park superintendent, uh, visited Westboro Country Club. This, similar to Packardog, is a nine-hole municipal golf course. And this, this facility is also of very similar nature in the sense that it is, it is managed very similar to Packardog, is essentially completely privatized, with the exception of a town hall employee that has allocated twenty hours per month as administrative assistant, um, which basically serves as the administrative assistant for the committee, which is appointed by the town manager that oversees the operations of the golf course. Again, golf carts, they are significant in terms of revenue generator. In this particular case, the golf carts are owned and maintained under a private contract with the company who's running the facility. And in each one of these cases, none of them are the same. They all have variations in how they're being operated and maintained. And we spent hours with, with each one of these, um, management teams in discussing pros and cons, what they saw as beneficial, what they saw for a trend. Westboro has indicated that, um, several years ago, they found the, the golf course to be, uh, very profitable. Over recent years, given the current, uh, situation with the economy and also with demographics, uh, they've found that the past couple of years, they've been operating at a loss. But overall, uh, since they've, uh, established an enterprise account, they're, they're still in the black, so they're still not negative. And, um, so they do see, hopefully, things changing in the future, uh, but obviously with the economy the way it is, it has taken a downturn. The third golf course that we visited was the Gardner Municipal Golf Course. This was also an eighteen-hole municipal golf course. The significance about this course is that this was the only golf course that is completely run and managed and operated by city employees. Um, the only exception is the, the restaurant is privately operated, and the golf pro basically works on a per diem basis. The staffing for the city, there is one full-time superintendent, three full-time workers that work nine months out of the year, and nine part-time seasonal employees. The, and again, the golf, the restaurant is privately operated. This, the other exception to this one compared to the other two golf courses is, over the past couple of years, I believe Gardner was the only one that's currently operating at a, at a profit as well. The current operations of the Packardog Golf Course, it's operated and maintained by a private contractor. The current contract is with Johnson Golf Management. They've actually, I believe, operated the golf course since, I believe, it was nineteen ninety-five, although the most recent agreement was executed in April of two thousand and five. The town receives thirty-six thousand dollars annually from Johnson to maintain the, for him to have the right to operate and maintain the golf course. That contract, as the town manager had mentioned, terminates December thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen. Revenues reported by Johnson Golf Management in two thousand and twelve were two hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred, and two thousand and thirteen were two hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred. Revenues that we found reported by the town of Westboro, which is in, in your report, were closer to four hundred thousand dollars. Now, that is also a nine-hole golf course, so you, you can see that there's definitely a lot of room for improvement and, and development of our, our golf course. So, the alternatives for how the Packardog Golf Course could operate in- So you can see that there's definitely a lot of room for improvement and development of our golf course. So the alternatives for how the Paketrag Golf Course could operate in the next couple of years, again, we looked at several different options. One, we could continue operating and maintaining the course by a private contractor. Basically, leave the golf course operations as it currently is, go out to bid, and award it to a contractor again. And the town would have minimal involvement with the operations and basically would stay as it has been in the past 20 years or so. Management of the facility and pro shop by the town, and maintenance of the tees, greens, and fairways by a private contractor. Now, this would be similar to how the city of Worcester is operating their golf course and is basically somewhat privatized, but also has involvement by the city with the oversight of the golf course. The concern, or I guess the concern with this particular option would be that the maintenance contract, I believe, for the city of Worcester is somewhere in the vicinity of 450,000 a year for an 18-hole golf course. Now, I wouldn't expect that a nine-hole golf course is going to be half that. So you, maybe you're 60% of that number. But in either case, you're probably somewhere in the vicinity of $250,000 per year. And in talking with other contractors, that, that's a realistic number and may even be a little low. When you look at the numbers that are being, that are being turned in, the cost to do this, the revenues wouldn't even sustain that cost. So obviously, as much as that's a, a good option, if you can afford that option, I don't think at this point, the current revenues being that we are taking in would sustain this type of operation. And the third option is the management, maintenance, and operation by town employees. The negative aspect of this is obviously requires a lot more work and oversight by the town employees. The positive aspect of this is we have direct control of the golf course. As much as we're still on the property, to go onto the golf course and perform drainage improvements on-site, obviously, the company who is running the golf course is going to be concerned about how soon we're going to be there, the repairs, and so there's going to be more involvement and more concerns and issues raised by the company who is managing the course. DPW staff would be available to assist the employees that would be working at the golf course in the winter, on days perhaps it may be 40 degrees, and it may be that, you know, asphalt plants are closed, but we might have the ability to go up to the golf course and remove some brush from an area that needs to be cleaned up. So there would be ability for DPW employees to assist in the operation of the course, to perform drainage work, to do improvements to the copass, to do additional landscaping as needed through the parks department. And in addition, I mentioned this, this option to the city of Gardner, having a DPW directly involved, and they said that they, they would be thrilled if their DPW had that much involvement. So it's something that would be a great benefit to have that asset available for the, for the management and the maintenance team of the Paketrag Golf Course. The restaurant, if expanded, would operate privately in all three scenarios. I think in every situation that we've looked at, none of the, none of the management teams were interested in managing a restaurant as well. The one, we'll say, in Westboro, they put out to bid their restaurant and the management of their restaurant, and the, it also required the rehabilitation of the restaurant. They seat, I believe, 120 people. The contractor who operates the golf course is also the contractor who is the successful bidder for that, for that project as well. The next step would be for us to now look at, what would the cost be if the town were to pursue the option of taking over the facility and managing it and operating it in-house? We would have to look at the staffing needs, what the needs are for the equipment purchasing, for purchasing or leasing golf carts, develop these cost estimates, and then meet with the town manager and the assistant town manager to review those as well. In part, while we are developing those estimates, I would be meeting with other management teams, again, with, that are operating golf courses, to go through some of the equipment lists that we've been provided, to see if all the items are needed, if there are things that aren't needed, or additional things that, that we may need, and to try to fine-tune the equipment list as well. And then I believe that information would then be brought back to the board of selectmen and presented to you in the future. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Did you want to add anything before we open it up to questions?
I would just add a couple of things. Thank you very much, Bill, and thanks to Joanna and Kenny, who's not here too. They did a great job on it. Just two things I just want to mention, and it is in your report, but industry trends are something that we need to look at also, and the industry trends are very interesting, and it weighs favorably toward the town in taking over the operations, which is that people are playing shorter courses now. As people's times are more constrained and they don't have a lot of free time, they're looking for shorter courses. And globally, people are actually looking at six- and nine-hole courses, actually a six-hole course as well. Also, there's an increased use of carts, and Bill mentioned the importance of the carts. People want to be done quicker, so they want to have the access to the carts to go faster through the course. There is an increase in youth players, which would be great for our Recreation and Culture Department to be able to start incorporating some outdoor, it's another outdoor recreational activity for under 18. And there's an increase in women players. And finally, one of the national and global trends is that facilities, golf course facilities, municipal as well as private, are becoming more family-oriented and more community-oriented, and they're, they're less focused on the traditional golf population of 50 years ago. For us, and I'm sure for the board, we look at this, that we're trying to preserve a valuable town asset, and we're trying to find the best way to do that. We've got to take into consideration, this, this is a very valuable open space for the town to have, and we want to make sure that it carries on for future generations. We want to use this as a quality of life issue. This, it's a quality of life for residents in town to have this, and it's good for the businesses in town to have the opportunity to take advantage of this. It's a community asset, and we just want to make sure that we have properly looked at the maintenance and repair and the costs of running this facility, which is why, as Bill said, we really need to make sure that the next phase of this is the financial analysis of the preferred options, which is that the town takes it over in some model, as shown here, or some hybrid of that model. So that would be the next step. But Bill did a great job on this. It's a lot of work to look at this, and I wanted to apologize in your initial packet, the attachments were not there, but they are in there now. That was my fault.
Mr. Holst?
Through the chair. Has your handicap improved since your tour of the study?
No.
No. My question to you, Bill, is, it sounds like there's three different modes of operation of the golf courses. In comparison to Auburn's golf course, are we better, are we worse, are we middle of the road with conditions at ours?
I think the conditions are probably middle of the road. I would say, there's definitely improvements, there's drainage issues that need to be addressed. There's areas where there's plywood that's thrown down on the course to cross over ditches, and there's a lot that we could do with the facilities division and construction of bridge, bridges in those areas. And again, with the highway staff, we could do drainage improvements. The fifth fairway is wet any time of the year, other than probably the summer, and you have to walk up gradient just so you don't get your feet wet walking through that area. So there's subdrain that could be installed. So there's a lot of work that we could do to try to improve the course itself. Thank you.
Mr. Simoni?
Yeah, I, you presented three options, so I'm just curious why we would only do a financial study on one of the options? Because it seems like if we're going to go down this road, why wouldn't we do that for all three options so we could compare and contrast what would be best for the town? I mean, I, I have a friend that actually was superintendent of a couple of golf courses, including Green Hill, and so I know a lot about, I've had a lot of discussions with him about costs and maintenance and things of that nature. And I've actually played at all four of those courses, so I guess I'd just like to see, if we're going, if we're going to spend the time to do a financial presentation for one option, why not all three? And give the board and anyone else who has vested interest. I mean, again, I agree, it's, it's a great space for the town and everything else, so I would, I would like to see that presentation for all three and, you know, give us the opportunity to compare and contrast costs, revenues, potential things, you know? I mean, I, if we were, if we're considering that aspect, you know, going the route of having a restaurant up there and all those other things like that, and moving into the arena, possibly moving into the arena of a place like Westboro, it's a great idea. But I also know, you know, from being around, around the game for over 20 years, there's a lot of things that we need to do to get there. So I'd just like to see all of those presented.
Absolutely. And we did discuss the other alternative of going out to a private contractor and what that cost would be. And I don't, I don't think that's been ruled out. I think at this point, we need to look at what our cost would be if we were to run the facility, and what the direct costs of purchasing equipment and golf carts would be. And then we can compare that to what numbers we are getting from the industry to what it would cost to maintain it. So I think part of our overall evaluation would include that information. I think the, the option of how we are currently operating the golf course and the current revenues that the town receives are 36,000 a year, that one, we will have to discuss to see how we can project what that would potentially be in the future. All indications are, it would be less than that in the future. But I think we would look at all three options as part of that presentation.
One more question through the chair, I guess to the town manager. If we, if we continue with the current status, operation, would we still be able to look into, you know, things like having a privately-owned restaurant or other amenities that, you know, make the course more appealing and increase revenues?
Through the chair, the current operations is, we would have to get them through another RFP. So the RFP could have any criteria that we wanted in it, which could be the inclusion of having to build a new restaurant, having to operate a restaurant, of having to have a clubhouse. You could put all of that in an RFP.
Okay.
So we can ask for anything. But what we're finding from the industry is that that trend of having private operators is bringing in less and less revenue to municipalities.
Makes sense.
Because a lot of, and we're seeing that now, when you put it out to bid, you have to do a long-term lease, because someone isn't going to put a major capital improvement into a project when they're only going to operate it for 10 years.
And that 36,000, that was fixed at the time of contract.
That is fixed.
So even if, even if those revenues go up, it doesn't change what the amount, so yeah, that's, that's definitely a potential drawback.
So we could, I mean, the town, there are, there are multiple options. These are the three most common, and these are kind of putting it together as three. There's any number of hybrids to that, you know, the town could go out to bid for a part of it, but we're finding that from the analysis that we did, not just in central Massachusetts, but looking at other courses across the country that pretty much go with any one of these three, the option that seems to be the least utilized now is the RFP process, because the town basically has no control over the property. Once you lease it out, you're, you have a lease, that's, that's it. That operator, you can give them a list of improvements that they have to do, which we have now, but there's no guarantee they're going to go over and above that. And the only good thing is you're guaranteed a certain revenue stream, but that revenue stream over a period of 10 years could, could potentially be higher than that, and is your course being maintained at the level that you want to maintain it at, when it's not in your control to do so. But yes, we, we could put anything in an RFP.
One last question for us. When you, the option where you talked about that was mixed between public and private, and I think you said it was all the maintenance and that was private?
Right, that, that was private.
So under the maintenance, you're talking about everything that the superintendent crew would do, that, the mowing, the seeding, the care, repairs, all of that stuff?
Fertilizing, everything.
So would, so then would the cost of those supplies, and that's all borne by the private contracting companies?
Correct, correct.
Okay, all right, thanks.
So I just want to go back to the maintenance. The maintenance seems to be a significant issue, and, and we could have a quality golf course under a town-operated, you feel, under a town-operated golf course, because you would have more control in getting, having access to the property?
I think the key with having it run completely by the town would be to ensure that we had a very competent superintendent to maintain the facility. So that, that's going to be a critical component. And then once that's in place, obviously, the, whether it's full-time or part-time staff, I think we would try to maximize the use of part-time employees beyond that and potentially even utilize college kids or high school kids with doing, with some of the maintenance and weed-whacking. And the mechanic work, we would probably look to have a part-time mechanic. But the other option too would be a fleet maintenance division, if they have any time available, although currently they don't. But there is potential there for the fleet division to be able to help out if there's, if there's a piece of equipment down and the part-time mechanic's not there and isn't available, well, we do have a fleet maintenance division. So because we have facilities, we have fleet maintenance, and we have all these other, you know, specialties available to facilitate the operations, I think there's a lot that we, we could potentially do in-house.
So if it were to be put out to bid again, I mean, I would think that the maintenance would be, I'm not sure how you, how you address that in an RFP and, and have it consistent. It's very, maintenance is very subjective, and I would think that a management company could do just the bare minimum and still meet the contract requirements?
Could, absolutely. Absolutely, and that's something that we would have to be very careful with to structure the RFP, to ensure that the individual bidding the contract has, has a proven track record. And you're absolutely right, we would have to identify key thresholds or points that they have to meet or exceed before we would even consider awarding them the contract. So basically, if we did go that avenue, it wouldn't necessarily be the low bidder. We would want to make sure that we had a quality contractor in place and then evaluate the cost.
Thank you. Anything, anything else from the board? Is there any, anything, any public comment?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coyle.
The next item we have is the real property disposition strategy, and there is a report in your packet dated February 6th, 2014.
Thank you. Through the chair, yes, there is a report in your packet on real property disposition strategy. And again, this was a goal that the board had given me last April to accomplish this year, this previous contract year. And I wanted to give the board the written disposition strategy that we've come up with. Also, I wanted to just notify the board that some of these strategies, we already started implementation throughout the year. We developed a strategy probably over the summer, wanted to make sure that we started to actually implement some of these things, rather than waiting till the end of the year to report to you on this. So we've been working on it all along. I think a couple of things that are noteworthy to mention would be that, number one, we need to have a clearly written, concise, again, written policy for property disposition. As you can see from this report, we've done a lot of research through town council and researching other national laws and other communities, just to make sure what the actual process is for disposition of property. And it's confusing, if you're a resident that decides, you know, maybe they'd like to purchase an abutting piece of land, or you're a businessperson that comes into town and wants to purchase something that the town owns, it's hard to find the information. So the first thing that we're recommending is that we come into the board with a property disposition policy that's written, that the board talks about, discusses, and then adopts it. Under the charter, there's a lot of different aspects of property disposition. It doesn't all fall under the town manager, as you can see from the report, it doesn't all fall under the board, nor does it all fall under town meeting. Everybody has a role in it. So I think it's important to outline that. It's in this report here, but for the public, I think we need something really short, concise, easy to follow, and this is the process. So as a result, we've come up with a, a draft policy on how we would do this. We also have a draft application for those who are seeking to purchase a property, and we also have a draft policy on how the town administration should meet, what we're recommending is on an annual basis, to go over all the parcels that we have. We've already done that twice now since I've been here. We've taken the complete list of parcels. We've gone over, we've made determinations of which ones we think we should keep, which ones we should RFP, which ones we potentially could combine, assemble and make into a larger parcel, which ones could potentially go under a new program called an abutters program. And we've come up with a basic outline of an abutters program, which, for all practical purposes, means that it's parcels that are valued at under $25,000 that you don't have to put out to bid, that may have a better value, a quality-of-life type of value to the resident who abuts that parcel. And giving the resident the opportunity to purchase that parcel puts it back on the tax rules. It takes it off of the town's liability side. of the town's liability side and gives it to a private owner to maintain it as well. So, it removes the town from having to maintain some of these parcels. So, the abutters parcel, the abutters program is another program that we wanted to do. And again, I don't want to repeat everything that's in the report, but for the public who may not see the report, and obviously, this will be available online, we, the six strategies basically are, we want to develop the written policy for consideration and adoption by the board. We want to establish the abutters program that I just mentioned for properties that are under $25,000. We want to continue, and I say, consider looking at the land of low-value foreclosures under Mass General Law, Chapter 60, Section 79, which means it's a different, it's an alternate mechanism to foreclosing on properties, rather than going through a land court. It may be less expensive for the town, but also, as a word of caution, I've spoken to some other towns and other treasurers and other communities, and they said that that, we need to look at that closely, because not all parcels have clear title, which might be part of the problem while they are in foreclosure. So, we don't want to get into a situation where we're taking a parcel that doesn't have clear title. So, in that case, individual properties would have to be looked at. It's just another option available to the town. We also recommending to prepare an RFP to solicit bids for auction services to sell our tax titled properties. We have tax titled properties that have been under the control of the towns, sometimes as back, far back as 40 years. And some of those parcels may not have any value to the town. Some of them were taken because of, or were kept because maybe there's a value to GPW for any type of an easement, or Conservation Commission needs it. So, those we would weed out and say, no, we don't want to get rid of those. But there are other parcels that we really shouldn't be keeping. So, under Mass General Law, for tax titled properties, they have to be auctioned. So, we would be putting together an RFP to get someone in to do an auction. And there's also an opportunity or an option of bringing in a third-party vendor, again, through an RFP, that comes in, packages everything, and then sells it for you. So, there's a couple of mechanisms, but we have to get rid of these properties that have been sitting on our books and not generating any taxes for decades. The fifth one strategy is to develop RFPs for those parcels that are determined to have potential value as redevelopment. And again, some parcels could be assembled if they were joining. So, we've worked, Adam Burney's worked hard to look through the GIS system, along with Cindy Cosgrove, the assessor, to look at and map out all these parcels. We've shaded them, we've colored them. What parcels could potentially be combined to be a larger parcel that may be actually a buildable lot for someone. By itself, it's not buildable, but maybe if you put them together, it is buildable, and again, it has value. So, we've made that initial recommendation on all of the parcels that we have. We have already started on the RFP. As you know, we issued an RFP for the 121 Southridge Street property, the former Skavon property. We didn't get any bids in on that. We're preparing to put it out again. We've done a significant outreach to the business community, again, to let them know it's coming out there. It's a commercial property, which is why I say the business community. And I think, you know, we're going to put it out again, and hopefully, we'll get some response to it. We also talked about at town meeting, the RFP process for camp leasing and everything that we're doing for that. And that's a different scenario. That's not a sale. That's a potential lease, to keep it in, within the town, but to get someone in there that can actually make an investment into the property and allow the town to still have access to the property. Finally, under the RFP issue, or under the disposition, we have worked with two residents in the last year and a half, both went through town meeting, to enable us to sell parcels of land that had no value to the towns, but had a value to that particular abutter. And the process was that, you know, we, we ended up having to go to town meeting and getting approval for that. And then, they will come back to you when they have all the legal work done. They'll come back to the board, because you are actually the only ones that can convey the deed and transfer title. So, town meeting approves of, of the sale. Town manager's allowed to, in this law, the town manager's allowed to go out in RFP and enter into any kind of temporary contracts, agreements. Then, the town meeting would authorize the sale of it. Once we do that, and the board of selection would be able to transfer title and convey the deed. So, that's the, that is the basic process. So, knowing that. Lastly, we felt the power of the strategy, which would be that the town should go through and look at everything every year. Look at all the parcels that we have. What should we keep? What's necessary? What should we potentially release? What should we recommend back to either town meeting or the board, as the case may be? And what should we auction? Under Mass General Law, that certain properties have to be auctioned. And we have already done that initial analysis. So, that is the disposition strategy that we came up with. There will be more to follow, because we want to come back to the board, again, with the written policy, which is being reviewed by town council right now, and, and the abutters program, which we want to get all the details together of that and bring that back to you. But we wanted to tell you, that's the direction we were taking.
Excellent. Any, Mr. Simonean?
I want to just go back quickly to the section, when you were talking about the properties that don't have clear title. How, how did this have to be resolved?
Yes, under, there's an option for foreclosure of properties under Mass General Law, Chapter 60, Section 79, that says that a town can go through, it's basically going through the Department of Revenue process, and it's online. This entire process, it's electronic, and you can go through and put in all the information you need. And through the Department of Revenue, you can actually foreclose on that property, take ownership, and then dispose of it, once you own it, under Chapter 30B. Anything foreclosed can be disposed of under Chapter 30B, which has certain regulations attached. It's an option that not a lot of communities have done. It was something we wanted to look into, because we understand that it's less expensive than going through the land court, and it's less time-consuming. So, you could be tied up in land court for two or three years on any given property. This can be done in a matter of months. The downside that we've been able to find out about is some of the properties that you may be interested in doing this for may not have clear title. So, our recommendation would be, if those properties don't have clear title, or if there are any title issues, you don't want to do this parcel, this mechanism. You'd want to go through the standard land court, even if it takes two or three years, at least you know it's, you're getting, you're foreclosing on something with clear title. So, that would be the word of caution, that before we just jump into this program, we look through and evaluate each of our properties that qualify for participation in this, because not all qualify. So, find out what qualifies. And there's quite a few qualifying criteria, but one of them is the fact that the Department of Revenue, every year, establishes the value that it has to be under. So, right away, if it's not under that particular value that gets established, then the parcel isn't eligible for this anyway.
Is there anything else? I just want to say, you know, clearly, you know, providing us with a report like this, you can see the work that went into it, and again, the long-term planning. And, you know, I congratulate you, whether it's a small issue or an issue like this, you know, having formal written policies is so key to the future of the town. So, you've, you've taken many of them head-on, and I congratulate you for that. The next item is the request, oh, I'm sorry, the bill payment schedule.
Yes, through the chair. This was another goal that was established by the board for the bill payment schedule. And I wanted to show you, the request that came from the board was to take a look at and show the board what the payment schedule was for all of the town's bills that we issued, and to look and see if we could distribute the payment schedule any differently than it's currently had, so that in any period, there would be no more than one coming in at a certain time. So, the first thing we had to do is look at all the bills that we issued. And then, we had to look at what the issue dates were, what the current due dates are, how many days we provide to pay, and who has the actual authority to establish the issuance date or the payment date. And therefore, what flexibility does the town actually have in billing? So, you can see from the first, from the chart on the first page, the, the basic bills that we have are real estate and personal property. Those are issued quarterly. Solid waste, and that is under Mass General Law. It has to be done at certain times of the year. Solid waste collection is under the town's authority, so we could move that around. That, right now, is done twice a year, and that schedule was changed within the last two years. We slowly phased it in to match the January and July billing dates, meaning the February 1 and August 1 due dates, to coincide with the real estate tax bills of those two quarters. Because a couple of things were happening on the solid waste. People were not paying their bills. They complained that they had to come in to town hall for their property tax, and, and they wanted to also pay other bills when they were here. They didn't want to have to keep coming back. So, that was the one that we did have control over. So, we put that with the real estate and property tax. As you can see, the rest of them, we don't have any control. The motor vehicle excise tax, that is established by the Registry of Motor Vehicles. They actually issue their valuations, and then their billings, and then the town is required to submit and issue their bills right after they get that. It generally happens in the spring, but we don't establish that date. And sewer. The sewer is under the control of the Sewer Commission. That is only annual. And they took a vote several years ago to issue their bills in October and provide a 60-day payment period for residents. So, they issue them in October, but they're not due till the end of December. It fluctuates a little bit every year, depending on, on the cost analysis that's done. But people do have 60 days for that. So, at the end of the day, the only one that the town, town administration could move on our own would be the solid waste collection. And again, we, we had sent out plenty of notices when I first started here, that we wanted to change the schedule, the billing schedule that we previously had just was not working. First of all, we were billing in the readers. So, we were billing after people already had their service. So, you're less likely to pay for a service when you've already had the service. So, now, having it go twice a year with the real estate and personal property tax to be due at the same time has been helpful for our collection purposes, and it's helped the residents, because they know that it's due at the same time as the real estate bills, and everyone knows when those are due. We do try to get the solid waste collection bills out earlier. We, the issue date that we've told people is January 1, but our assessor's office prepares the bills, and they actually have been getting them out in December. So, that's why I say we have a 30 to 60-day period to pay, because 30 days is what we tell people that they have to pay by law, but we're trying to give them as much as we can. So, we do get those out. So, there are only two periods during the year where people in town have to pay more than one bill. And that is the bills that are due February 1, which again is the real estate and personal property tax, along with the solid waste. And again, on August 1, the real estate and personal property, along with the solid waste.
Are there any questions or comments? So, just, I mean, it's clear that the town only has control of, like you said, the solid waste and when those go out. If anyone has a concern, the only other option would be to contact the Sewer Commission regarding their sewer bills?
Right. And that is an annual bill. And I believe when the board raised this issue initially last April, and the discussion took place, I believe the discussion was, we wanted, the board was concerned that people were getting too many bills at one time. So, I think what we're seeing here is that they're really not. It's only twice a year that they are getting the two bills. The rest are spread out, and the Sewer Commission is only once a year.
Okay. Anything else on that? Next, we have a request to, request approval to authorize town manager to apply for the fiscal year 2013 Citizen Corporation Program grant.
Yes, through the chair. We continue to try to seek and identify grants. We've been fortunate and successful in the field of emergency management. It's been great. As you can see, if you drive through town, we have trailers, we have equipment for CERT members. It's been wonderful. And these are competitive grants. They're hard to get. And we continue to work to identify and submit for that. The most recent one that we'd like to put in for is a fiscal year 2013 CCP grant. We did receive one in '09, again, one in 1011, which was one, one in fiscal 12, and now, this is fiscal 13. We've been told that we're eligible to apply for up to $1,300. Our intent is to purchase six additional radios for our CERT team members to be used during events and emergencies. We replaced, they used to have walkie-talkies, and through a grant a couple of years ago that Mr. Holstrom will remember when he was the Emergency Management Director, we were able to secure a grant and replace 12 of the radios for the CERT team. I believe we purchased 10, and then we got another part of a grant. So, all in all, we ended up with 12. It's not enough radio. We had an event such as an Independence Day event, or we have an event that involves a shelter room. We've got 25 different people working in different shifts. 12 radios does not do it. And what happens is, they can't communicate with police and fire if they don't have the, they're not on the right radio frequency. So, we need to get these radios. The LEMPC, which is the Local Emergency Management Planning Committee, identified this as a priority for CERT. It is an eligible expense, so we'd like to put in four of the six radios with the equipment that goes with it. There's in one radio a battery for a total of, I believe the grant is just a shade under $1,300. It's 1,290. If we could find something for the additional $10 that went with this, we would, but it's about 1,290. So, I, I would like the board to vote to authorize town manager to submit this grant.
I'm moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted. Next, we have the Department of Energy Resources Energy Manager Grant.
This is a grant, and Adam Burney's here if we have any specific questions. But this is a new grant that the state announced through the Department of Energy Resources, or D O E R, for communities to apply for either a part-time or a full-time energy manager to have on their staff. And we evaluated, we met with the school department, we met with Joe Fahey, Adam Burney, myself, to talk about what are our needs as far as energy. And just by way of background, as you know, we've received other energy grants where really, the schools have done a great job in the past of implementing energy efficiency programs. We are doing the same thing on our end. We have a lot of energy efficiency programs going on in town. We've got net meter and credit agreements. We've got just a number of things that are going on. We're replacing things. We're getting grants to replace things. We're working to potentially look to get gas lines in. We're doing whatever we can to keep our costs down from a utility perspective. This would provide a part-time energy manager to work with Adam Burney to manage all of the energy programs that Adam now manages as one of his four or five hats that he wears, in addition to everything else that he does. And he does a great job, but he could certainly use the help here. There is a requirement for a 10% match, 5% of which can be in-kind, meaning the work that's already being done by staff can count toward the match. And that would leave 5% that the town would have to come up with. Adam is putting together a grant application for about $15,000.
Okay.
Thank you. $18,000 for a part-time position, no benefits to help do this. And therefore, the town's match would be probably around $800 or $850 of the 5%. And the additional match would come from the in-kind match. So, it's a good program. Hopefully, it's very competitive. I don't know that, how many communities plan on applying for this, but not every community in Massachusetts has been as aggressive with their energy management, and not every community is a green community. And as we are a green community, I think that will bode well when we apply for this grant.
Any, Mr. Simonean?
Just want, what would be the funding mechanism for the match?
The, Adam, you met with Ed today. I just want to get it right. I believe it would come out of professional development?
Yeah, in, in discussions with the CFO, he felt that there's a current budget item for professional services, and due to the limited expense for the 5% match, he felt that it could be covered as part of the general service, I'm sorry, the professional services budget in the next fiscal year.
And through the chair, I believe this would be a contracted position?
Yes.
As well. So, because it's a contractual position, it falls under a professional service as opposed to an employee.
Anything else on that? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to authorize the application process.
Second. And accept the funds.
And accept the funds.
Thank you. Second? Second, yes. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Both have voted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burney. Do you have anything else under town manager items?
No.
Okay. We're going to go back to member items. The first item is discussion and vote to create selectmen policy for all presentation and hearing agenda items. Mr. Simonean?
Yeah, we really don't need a lot of discussion here, because we've talked about this, and I brought it up a couple of times. I just, and we recently passed a policy regarding member items that required a certain level of detail in order for the public to be informed enough that they could show up at a meeting and be prepared for that item, to discuss it and understand what was going to be discussed under that. So, I just, I felt that, you know, if, there's no reason why we shouldn't do that as well for items that are under present, public hearings and presentations. Not so much public hearings, because that's, that's a different animal. But presentations that are going to be done in front of the board, I would, I would think that we would want to give the public the opportunity to be as prepared to discuss those as we would any member items that would be on the agenda.
Is there any comment by the board? Mr. Holstrom?
Yeah, I, I would agree with what he's got proposed here. We don't need a full paragraph or a full eight-and-a-half-by-11 summary of what's going to happen, but just give us a brief statement of what's coming forward as a presentation, and we'll have some idea.
Similar to what, what is required for member items, I, I would think-
Similar to what, what is required for member items, I, I would think would be sufficient.
So I'm not sure what your expectation was tonight, or we can certainly, you know, draft something, the subcommittee which we'll be meeting with, and bring it back to the board?
That's fine.
Okay. Are there any objections to that? All right, the subcommittee will look at developing a policy. Your second item, Mr. Simoni?
This, this, the second item, I, I, where it concerns the entire board, I'm going to hold this to our next meeting, hoping the entire board will be present.
Okay. And having said that, I just want to say, Mr. Grossman called five minutes before the meeting started and was delayed at work, and had fully expected to be here by 7:30, but because he was delayed, wasn't able to make it. So I just wanted the board to know that, so.
I, actually, and I, I thought of this, so I'll put this out there, and if it's something that Town Manager wants to address at the next meeting, that's fine. I, I was just, because we haven't heard anything since it happened, but I was just wondering where we are with the damage that occurred at the police station from the pipe that burst, and, you know, where we are with that repairs, and, and, you know, how that's going. So if, if you need.
I will, I will check and get back to the board. When I spoke last week with the police chief, it was last Thursday, he said that the community should be done within the next couple of weeks, but I can get you more detailed reports on that.
Are there any other member items? Mrs. Brotherton?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I am very much hoping that we can resolve the policy issues between the board, between ourselves. I feel as though the residents are most likely getting a little sick and tired of listening to the squabble and the back and forth. I'm not quite sure, and, and I am addressing you, Mr. Simoni, and with no due disrespect, I'm concerned that maybe the context of that policy was taken out of context, or you didn't understand it.
I don't know what policy you're talking about.
We're talking, the policy regarding contacting, I'm sorry, contacting legal counsel.
Okay.
Okay. That whole, we came up with a policy for that, so that the town wasn't incurring so many legal costs. Number one. Number two, it's not Mr. Simoni and legal counsel. You're part of a board, as we all are. And what we, what we were trying to do with this policy was connect with your peers to see if they too had a concern or a question for legal counsel. Or maybe, maybe it didn't have to be answered by, by legal counsel, maybe the answer was right here within our department. I can assure you, I, I don't believe, I don't believe, these are my thoughts, I do not believe, and I don't speak that often, so you're going to take it while you can. There is no reason, I, I, I don't want you to think that there's no reason why you can't call legal counsel.
The policy states I can't.
The, the policy states that you can't do it by yourself, but you check with your other peers. I am sure, I'm, I'm sure, and I may be wrong, I'm sure if you had a legal issue and you spoke with, with the chair, Madam Chair, she could check to see if any of us also had the same concerns, so that these issues could be addressed in one phone call, okay? The Town Manager saved us $100,000 by not including Town Council and negotiations. It's $100,000. $51,000 was saved so far by the board not doing numerous phone calls or, or constant. You are not being singled out. You, you bring a lot to this board. I, I enjoy sitting, I learn, I learn every day, but please don't take offense to that. We just ask, I ask, let me put it, I can't speak for the board. I am asking, maybe check with us to see if anyone else is having that same concern, because as a board, we work as a board, and the board does have right to legal counsel if it's pertaining to a board issue. You do have the right, we all have the right, if it is pertaining to the board. I, I, my understanding is if that any of us have a personal grievance, or there's something out of context, we don't call Town Council. That's, that's within ourself. And I apologize, I mean, no disrespect to any of my board members, I just feel as though there's been some pretty articulated battles back and forth over the past couple of weeks. And there are so many pressing things in the town of Auburn right now that need to be addressed. And I think all the concerns are taken very well into the board's consideration. You are here for the same reason we all are. We want to better our community, we want to keep our residents safe, we want to honor their wishes to the best of our ability and to represent them in our best ability. And we don't need a lot of bickering, there's a lot of bickering going on right now. And I would just love to, love to have the seat, I, I, you are entitled to speak, and I, I appreciate your thought for waiting for the board, the full compliment, I appreciate that. I just had to, I just had to get this off of my chest, because I, I just feel as though we're really going in a very good direction by cutting the costs. And, and hopefully, you too will see that you're not being alienated. My goodness, if I thought of calling the lawyer every time I had a question since I've been in office, a million dollars. A million dollars at least. Would have to, I, seriously. But I have been very fortunate, and I have learned that I can go to my peers, you, Madam Chair, Mr. Holstrom, Mr. Grossman, Sharon, Sharon. I'd be lost without Sharon, you know? And when you utilize a crew like that, that truly is a, a close-knit family. And that's what I want our residents to see. And that's what I ask.
I have no problem with that. I've, I've asked the same thing several times.
Okay.
But as far as, as far as this policy goes, what bothered me the most about it is the fact that, and, and, you know, the reasons that were argued initially proved not to be the, the actual reasons for the policy. And where I was willing, more than willing, to give the rest, the entire board, the, I, I just, I just felt the policy was unnecessary for the simple fact that if there was an issue that was, I, I think, I think all of us are smart enough to know what issues might potentially be some overlap. And someone else might have been called by a resident or spoken to someone in one of the departments to say, well, before I call legal, let, let me see if anyone else has already called.
Sure.
So in that regard, there really is no reason for the policy, because, in my opinion, because I'm willing to give that leeway to the board to say that, but, you know, you all were there, except for, except for Mr. Holstrom. And again, I'm not going to talk about it, because it was executive session, but you know exactly the reason. And, and you know, there are times when things can't be discussed publicly.
Absolutely.
Until you speak to counsel. So to come to this board puts any person in a position now where you have to decide to either violate policy or bring an issue to the public that could potentially put the town in a position to get sued. So, so realistically, the, the main argument for this policy was that it would save money, and I would argue that now we've put ourselves in a position where we could incur more costs. And, and I think that's where we are because of this policy.
Regarding negative, some negative?
For that, for that very reason. If, if someone had to bring, come to this board with an issue, knowing that there was a potential that discussing that in public could have someone say, you know what, I'm going to sue the town. Because that was not something that should be brought into public, or one of us, there have been several times since I've been on this board, that members of this board, as selectmen, found themselves in a position that they need, you know, an ethics complaint, things of that nature. The entire, the entire board, just before I was elected the first time, was impugned over the discussions and, and the way that the Town Manager Selection Committee was, over minutes being released. There were, I mean, allegations flying, a lot of that couldn't be discussed in public. But now, the policy essentially forces someone to do that. And then someone to turn around and, and say, well, you know, you either violated an ethics because you discussed executive session information in public, or they could say, well, you know, that, now you've made it a personal issue, and I'm going to sue the town.
I just, I just, I, I.
Okay, I, yeah, it's, it's not back and forth, I understand.
No, I just want to say, I don't want to have a, you know, just either way to be addressed or whatever, but just so we're not having a conversation between the two of you, I absolutely agree.
You know, so I, I, I say it to the entire board, I mean, those were the concerns I raised. I, I, I knew there would be, I knew there would be a time where that policy would handcuff us. It happened, and I still think the potential exists for, rather than someone, any of us being, like I said, we're all smart enough to know, yeah, you know what, this is something that this person could have spoken to another member of the board, let me find out if anyone else talked to counsel. But if it's something more personal that is occurred in your position as an elected member to this board, that shouldn't be discussed in public, and there's a reason why client attorney privilege exists. So now you have to, now we've put ourselves in a position where those issues have to be discussed publicly before someone goes to legal, and then legal could turn around and say, oh my God, what did you just do? You just, why, you discussed that in public, and now that person could sue the town. It, it doesn't make sense to me, so.
I'd have to check legal services to come up with any answer for that.
I'll just, I'll just make one comment on that, that.
Sure.
Just to, to remind everyone that, you know, since we adopted the policy, there is the option of any member going to the chair or the Town Manager, since it was adopted.
Understood, understood. But again, I will, I will reference the situation that I was in. I felt it was not pertinent to discuss with anyone until I spoke to legal, because of the potential for there to be a lawsuit against the town. So you can talk to any attorney you want, nothing in the legal world fits nice and neatly into boxes. There's, there's, that's a reason why we have attorneys, that's a reason why they call in an opinion, because one attorney will argue one thing, another attorney will argue another. And I just think, having the opportunity to run something by alleviates the potential to have to come here and discuss it, or go and discuss with Town Manager beforehand, and now you've brought someone else in, into a situation that it probably, probably was in your best bet to speak to legal and have them say, yeah, this is how we need to handle this, so. And also, once you discuss that with someone else, pretty much negates the attorney-client privilege, because you've had another discussion. If, if someone were to discuss it publicly or with the Town Manager, there is no more attorney-client privilege, because now it's out in the public.
But all members of the board would be involved, because it's, Town Council represents the Board of Selectmen, not individual members.
Understood.
So although the, the attorney-client privilege applies to the board, not individual members.
Understood. But once you have that conversation with someone else, it is no longer just between you and an attorney. So, and again.
It is if the.
Given the situation that we're all aware of, I would have negated that attorney-client privilege if I had the conversation with anyone else before talking to, because someone could say, well, you discussed it with them, so it's not real.
Not if you had had it with a board member, because, because the attorney represents the Board of Selectmen, not individual members. You'll never, you don't have individual members represented.
I don't know, that's a pretty fine line to walk, I'm.
Okay. Are there any, there are no tabled items, is there any public comment? We have the minutes of January 27, 2014, and the minutes of June 10, 2013. Are there any corrections or omissions?
Nope.
Having none?
Sharon, well done, thank you very much.
If I, I'm sorry to interrupt too, if I could add one thing, just, I wanted to point out that normally you have minutes that are consecutive from other meetings. The reason the January 27 minutes are on here, if you recall, the Board of Selectmen took a vote on specific language related to the SOI, the Statement of Interest that was being submitted. The MSBA, Mass School Building Authority, got back to the school superintendent and said she needed a certified copy of the vote and a certified copy of the minutes. So if you could kindly, through the chair, could you vote to accept these minutes, and then they become, as opposed to just?
Is there a motion to accept the minutes of January 27, 2014?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted.
Thank you.
If there's no more business before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so voted.
Thank you.
We are adjourned.[1772.33]